Good morning. We will get started on the June 6, 2023 City Council meeting. Please call roll.
Garza.
Here.
Conklin.
Here.
Goss.
Here.
Fast.
Here.
Richardson.
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Griffin Dubovic, Dubovic, Dubovic. I'll get it right next time, I'm sorry.
You practice between now and then.
I will.
Let's pray. Holy One, known by many names, Spirit of life, Spirit of love, Spirit of community, and Spirit of justice, we ask your blessings on the people who have been called to lead this community in which we live, work, and play, and help them as leaders to not ask first how do we fix this, but what do we need to learn? How might we need to change? And to whom do we need to listen? Remind us that no matter where we live, everyone is our neighbor, and that throughout the ages prophets have called the leaders of the people to respect and protect the least of those among us: our children, the elderly, the poor, those who are hungry, those who have no homes, those who are ill in body, mind, or spirit, the strangers in our midst, those who live on the margins, those who are alone, those who are forgotten. Grant them and us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good and true. May they and we speak out when it is time to speak out and listen. And may they and we always be guided by the Spirit of community, by the Spirit of justice, and by the Spirit of love. This we pray in the name of all we hold sacred and holy, all that we hold good and right and true. Amen.
Next item, please.
Item 4A, a proclamation for Juneteenth Independence Day.
Mr. Stello, if you want me, or some friends going to meet too.
Fantastic. You know, we've had some meetings where we've had quite a few proclamations. I don't want to rush through these and make it seem like they're watered down because each one is important, so please just bear with me. Make sure we get everyone up here. Let's get everyone around here in case we need to get pictures, if you guys don't mind. Whereas Juneteenth is a celebration that commemorates the official ending of slavery in Confederate states, and whereas President Abraham Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation was issued January 1, 1863, but news of the end of slavery did not reach the frontier areas of the United States, particularly the southwestern states, until June 19, 1862, when Union soldiers arrived in Galveston, Texas with news that the Civil War had ended and that the enslaved were free. And whereas African-Americans who had been slaves in the Southwest celebrated June 19, commonly known as Juneteenth Independence Day, as inspiration and encouragement for future generations. And whereas we acknowledge the historical significance of Juneteenth Independence Day to the United States and join the continued nationwide celebration of Juneteenth Independence Day to provide an opportunity for the people of the United States to learn more about the past and to better understand the experiences that have shaped the United States. And whereas Juneteenth is a day to remember the moral strain and terrible toll of slavery on our country, but it is also a day that reminds us of our capacity to heal, hope, and emerge from those dark moments with purpose and resolve. And whereas while we have come a long way in our efforts to promote equity and justice, there is still work left to do. Now therefore, I, John Richardson, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, do hereby proclaim June 19, 2023, as Juneteenth Independence Day, and encourage all residents to join in celebration and solidarity, and further urge all residents to actively raise their awareness of the significance of this celebration of African-American history in the city of Hutchinson. I'll present this to you. Thank you very much. And any remarks?
Yeah, I'll say a few words, and then I think some of the friends behind me here will say a few words, some of them. Good morning, Dave Zatell, a human relations officer. There's a key word here in the proclamation, there's still work to do. There's still work to do in the struggle for justice and for equity. And for the African slave, there was always work to be done still. And that should bring us two things: joy. Joy because if there's still some work to do, it means that we got some work done. And hope, because we can have an impact on the work that we do from this day forward. And so remembering the struggle of Americans, the struggle of Black Americans that started before this nation was funded, and it still is going on today, brings me joy to be here and to just be a facilitator of that work that's done by the people behind me. So I'll let them say a few words, but thank you for this celebration, and I hope they'll talk about some of their activities that are going on for Juneteenth, and I hope you're able to join them for that.
A member of the NAACP Youth, and then Shantina, you have two words. Calvin, if you want to say something.
Good morning, I'm Calvin Wright. I'm the president of the local chapter of the NAACP, and I just want to thank the city for their efforts. The proclamation says that word didn't reach the frontier for two years, right? Word reached, it did reach the frontier, it wasn't acted on. And so I just continue to thank the council and ask that you continue to act on the information that you have of the injustices and the imbalances in our community. We hear about them, but we don't have to wait for word, we got the word. And so I just want to thank you for the proclamation and recognizing this day and its significance. And as David said, there's work to be done. We know the work, we know the injustices. It's the action on the injustices. We don't have to wait for Union troops to tell us what we already know. So, thank you.
Hi, I would like to thank the council for that, all they have done. As we know, justice and the fight for justice and equity do not have an age limit, which is why I'm here. And I would like to thank all of you for the work you have done. NAACP Youth is hosting a Juneteenth celebration, starting on June 15, all the way to June 17. Yes, so.
Each council member has a flag.
Yes, be on the lookout for that, it's going to be very fun, and I invite all of you to it. Thank you.
Good morning, council mayor, City of Hutchinson residents, Shantina Tipton, Hilo Inc., founder and CEO of Hilo Inc. We are having our second annual Juneteenth celebration on Friday, June 16, through Sunday, June 18. On Friday, June 16, we're having a blood drive at the Stringer Fine Arts Center here in Hutchinson, at Hutchinson Community College, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00. We encourage all you guys to get out and come donate. We are, in our community and across the nation, we are struggling to get minorities to donate blood to help fight sickle cell anemia. So I encourage all minorities to come out and do your part and give blood, please, thank you. Also, on Saturday, June 17, we're having a Juneteenth Pancake Feed at the Stringer Fine Arts Center from 9:00 a.m. to 10:30. And on Saturdays, the 17th, that evening, or early afternoon, we're having a three-point shootout basketball tournament. That tournament will be at Journey Midnight Church at 808 South Popular in South Hutchinson. Registration starts at 10:30 a.m., trophies will be awarded. And then on Sunday, June 18, we've got a special thing going on. We're going to have Juneteenth motorcycle riders coming from Hutchinson and around the nation, riding from 30th Street all the way to Cary Park to the picnic, which will start on Sunday at Cary Park at the Home Builder Shelter to Emerson Loop at 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. There will be free food, there'll be vendors, there'll be a live band, Domino's and Spade tables will be there. We're going to have a Juneteenth car show. The proceeds from that car show will benefit the Eddie L. Tipton Minority Scholarship at Hutchinson Community College. So I invite the council, the mayor, City of Hutchinson residents, to come out and help celebrate Juneteenth. Thank you for your time.
All right, well, thank you.
Next item?
Item 4B, a proclamation for Immigrant Heritage Month.
Whereas generations of immigrants from every corner of the globe have built our country's economy and created the unique character of our nation, and whereas immigrants continue to grow businesses, innovate, strengthen our economy, and create jobs in Hutchinson, and whereas immigrants have provided the United States with unique social and cultural influence enriching the character of our nation, and whereas immigrants have been tireless leaders not only in securing their own rights and access to equal opportunity, but have also campaigned to create a fairer and more just society for all Americans. Now therefore, I, John Richardson, Mayor of the Hutchinson, of City of Hutchinson, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2023 as Immigrant Heritage Month in the city of Hutchinson, Kansas, and I urge all citizens to join in this observation.
Thank you. Here you go.
Good morning, I'm still Dave Zatell, a human relations officer. You know, earlier this year, I got to attend the midnight relief sale, and it really made me think about immigration beyond my own experience as an immigrant and a son of immigrants, that I could enjoy Ukrainian food and see all sorts of art from people from different places of the world that are not Hutchinson, Kansas. Then later this year, we'll get to go to the Hispanic Fiesta in southwest Brickdown, and it really makes me think about the beauty of immigration, what it brings to our communities, that joy, that culture, that enriches who we are. And I think of it as a quilt, right? The many pieces that make up a quilt, the beauty of the colors and the diversity of a quilt, that's sort of what happens when we are welcoming of immigrants. Just this last week, I got a call by a local priest who said, "Can you come tonight to one of our prayers that we're having at a home in the south end of that town?" My parishioners are really worried, because there's a new law that will come in effect on July 2 that redefines smuggling and human trafficking, and it includes the, it creates a lot of risk for documented folks that live in our community that make up the beautiful quilt of our community. And so I walked into this home that was crammed by a bunch of ladies and some men that were praying the rosary, and got to hear their fears and their struggles. So again, that struggle lives on. That joy lives on, and it inspires me, and it makes me scared, and it makes me worried. But that is who we are as a community, so I'm glad that we are doing this celebration to remind us of the contributions of immigrants to our community and the struggle of immigrants to our communities. Thank you.
And Esmeralda has a few words.
I can go on forever, so I wrote it down. From the bottom of my heart, thank you so much. My name is Esmeralda Tovar Mura, and I immigrated to the United States 25 years ago from Mexico, making Hutchinson the only home that I've ever really known. This proclamation is healing and reassuring a community that is living in fear, healing me. It is important to express solidarity with immigrant communities during a time when laws and policies are popping up, like the one that Dave just mentioned, especially in Kansas, that are meant to drive folks back into hiding and make them feel unseen and unwelcome. It took me 18 years to speak up for myself. I cannot let that happen again, out of fear of deportation or unjust policies and laws. Throughout many points on this journey, the DACA program that I qualify for, to be able to stay and work in this country, has been considered unlawful, it has been at risk of being completely scrapped, and it has been closed to new applicants. Currently, the litigation challenge for it is pending a judge ruling, which will likely go back to the Fifth Circuit. It's okay if you don't know what that means. This Fifth Circuit is the only court with the power to halt renewals, according to their decision in October of 2022. However, that decision can also be appealed by the Supreme Court. I have had to stay up to date on policies, court cases, and rulings that vary from state to state in order to keep track of what is going on and what my family's next steps could be. And I have had to live with the possibility and danger of deportation from the moment that I applied for this program when I was a teenager. However, I am not alone. The immigrant experience is complex, it varies by person and situation, and it is a reminder of the need for immigration reform. DACA recipients, farm workers, refugees, asylum seekers, TPS holders, and undocumented immigrants, they live here, and they consider Hutchinson their home. I love this community and want to be a part of the process and all of the processes that will ensure that it thrives. Immigrants have made invaluable contributions for generations to enrich the culture, communities, and economy in the United States. Immigrant Heritage Month aims to be a reminder to immigrants that home is here. May we celebrate our immigrant communities today and every day.
Item 4C, a proclamation for Smallville, Kansas.
In Entourage? Whereas the fictional character Clark Kent, also known as Superman, arrived in Smallville, Kansas in a spaceship during a meteor shower, and whereas the City of Hutchinson and Smallville share many similarities, and whereas the City of Hutchinson has formally recognized these similarities since June 21, 2013, when Clark Kent/Superman was abducted into the Kansas Hall of Fame, now therefore, I, John Richardson, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, do hereby proclaim that June 15 through 17, 2023, the City of Hutchinson shall be known as Smallville, Kansas, the home of Clark Kent. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, to be affixed this sixth day of June, 2023.
Can I say something?
You bet. All right. It's crazy to think we're at 10 years. I want to thank the mayor and the city council. Lots changed since I first came in here and asked for this proclamation. I think the council chamber was different back then, it wasn't remodeled yet, and our good friend Mayor Bob Bush was here for the first proclamation, and he's dearly missed. One thing that hasn't changed in the 10 years, though, is the community support for this event. It just continues to grow, and I'm so grateful for that. I just want to give you a quick rundown of what we have in store this year for our Smallville Festival. I'm actually starting today over at the Reno County Museum through next Saturday. We've got a display of artists' costumes, a timeline of the last 10 years, which celebrates where we've come since 2013, and that will be at the Reno County Museum from today through the 17th. Next Thursday is the start of the Smallville Festival. We'll start tonight with Clark Kent reading the proclamation. I'm sure we can find Clark Kent somewhere. We'll be having a kids' and a pet costume contest that night, so we encourage everyone to dig out those Halloween costumes and bring the kids and pets out for that. What I'm, one thing I'm really excited for this year is kind of a commemorative part is of the 10 years, we're going to be doing a most Clark Kent's and Cara Kent's photo op in front of Specs, who is sponsoring this event. The first 250 people that show up will get a free pair of glasses. We'll take a commemorative photo of that, which will be a great tribute to 10 years. On Friday, June 16, the Cosmosphere is doing a buy-one-get-one tickets for all first responders as part of our First Responder and Local Heroes Day. Reno County Museum will be doing a thank a first responder luncheon again, which had a great turnout last year. We encourage everyone to come out and thank our local first responders. They're the real heroes of the community. And then that night at 7:00 p.m., the Fox Theater will be showing a free movie, DC's League of Super Pets, very family-friendly, fun, animated movie. So we encourage you to go check that out. And then on Saturday, June 17, we start with the Smallville 5K at Stratica. We're having our first-ever Smallville Open Disc Golf Tournament out of Rice Park. At the fairgrounds, we'll be doing the Smallville Superhero Obstacle Course. Downtown will be doing an amazing race-style event. We call it the Amazing Smallville Challenge, where we combine mental and physical and clue-solving to take you around Smallville and be involved in all the businesses downtown. At 5:00, at the fairgrounds, will be a Smallville Show and Shine, another car show out at the fairgrounds, which precedes Smallville Fair Food and Tunes that night at the fairgrounds, where we will give out all our awards from the day. There will be a concert after that. Steel Scarecrow is the band that's going to be performing there. And that will end our festival, but I just want to say that on Thursday, we've got so much input and cooperation from downtown. We've got over 20 groups or businesses that are doing events that have something superhero-related for kids or adults. We have 60 artist vendors, info booths that will be spread downtown. Six downtown restaurants will be open, and we'll have 10 food and beverage trucks downtown. So it's going to be a fun three days in downtown Smallville, and it's just hard to believe that we're at year 10, so thank you again.
Hi, Lori Beth Reynolds, Marketing Manager for Hutch Rec. I just want to say thank you for the proclamation. All of the information that Chris just shared with you is online at hutchrec.com/smallvillefestival. You can download a festival guide there, also on social media. So if you need reminders, or just want to check a time or plan your weekend, you can go there. Also, just want to say what a testament to our great community that there are a lot of variety of things going on that weekend, so makes me kind of excited. So, thank you.
Yeah, Jeff Johnson, Community Event Manager with Hutch Rec. I want to thank you all for getting behind this event, this fun festival, and doing this proclamation for us. I also want to thank all our community partners that helped make this happen, all the downtown businesses, the Wile E. Business District, the Antique District, the Kansas State Fair, Stratica, Cosmosphere, the Reno County Museum. Without everybody there, we can't have this festival. Everybody doing their part is what makes it happen. And most of all, I want to thank the community. It's a lot of fun seeing kids come down and be kids, adults come down and be kids, and just have a fun evening for these three days. So, thank you.
All right, next item, please.
Item 5, oral communications from the audience.
All right, this is the section of the meeting where we open up the microphone to the audience. Please limit your remarks to five minutes and to items not on the agenda, and of course, your name and address, if you don't mind.
Good morning, Justin Combs, Director of Parks and Facilities. I just wanted to give everyone a quick update on the GVI Trail. That's a trail on the north end of town. A little over a week ago, we had some damage to that trail while doing some trail maintenance. The sand truck, which is kind of the last part of the process- The sand truck, which is kind of the last part of the process, did break through some of the asphalt, causing some damage, primarily due to a base failure, so the rock underneath the trail just wasn't adequate. We've done the exact same treatment for all of the Jim Martinez Trail with no issue. So we are working on a solution. I had a contractor yesterday go and look at it, and then once we get some ideas of cost, and then we'll come up with a solution for that. We do have a concrete bid, annual bid on the books as well that we could utilize. The intent is to just cut out the bad pieces, pour them back to concrete. To get asphalt equipment in there, we're going to do even more damage, so really our best option is just to patch those broken areas with concrete. We hope to get that done as soon as we can. I do not have a timeframe yet. I will keep you informed, but it is a priority for us to get that fixed. However, the other larger issue this really brings up is now that we know we have insufficient base underneath that trail, we're really not going to be able to do much more maintenance on the trail moving forward. Typically, every five to eight years, we do some sort of seal code on it. Now that we know we could break through, again, really, we need to look at an alternative solution, either a full reconstruct or, you know, a two-inch melon overlay or something much more intense than just another seal code. The patching we'll do will buy us several years, so it's not an immediate issue, but we do need to put that on our radar, that we're going to have to do some pretty heavy maintenance on that trail within the next five or so years.
Where is this exactly?
So this is the GVI Trail. It starts at Plum, just north of 30th, and then extends all the way basically to Dylan's Marketplace, so crosses Lorraine.
And how many feet are damaged?
We don't have a total count yet on the total square feet. That's something we're working on, something I have in the contractor estimate. The trail is still open, so it's just in areas we have kind of combed off.
You mean like a mile of it, or like 10 feet?
It's in, there's probably 10 or 15 small sections that are between, I don't know, 10 square feet and maybe 50 square feet. So it's just where the back wheels of the sand truck sunk into, sunk into the trail itself, so. To complete the whole thing in concrete, in today's dollars, if we were to just rip it out and start over, we're looking at a million, million-two probably. Could be divided out into phases, but again, we'll get it patched, we'll get it up and running. It is open now. We have those bad spots combed off, so people can still use the trail, but obviously, we want to get that fixed as quick as we can, so.
I guess I'll go for a bike ride, check it out.
All right. Thank you.
Steven Beer, Hutchinson Fire Chief. I just want to invite our community, our citizens, that next week, Thursday, 3:00, we'll have the hose cutting ceremony at the new fire station at 2222 North Main Street, followed by an open house from around 3:30 to 8:00. And then again, for the people that are working that evening, Saturday the 17th, from night to noon, we'll also have the open house. Thank you.
Thank you. If not, we'll move on to the next item.
Item 6, Consent Agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, please call roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Conklin?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 7A, Consider Resolution Approving a Special Event in a Designated Entertainment District for June 3rd Thursday Event.
Paul Brown, City Attorney. You had before you proposed resolution. It's literally, if you look at the map, a beer garden out in front of Sleep Shop on Main Street, and you can see the little diagram. It is in conjunction with the 3rd Thursday event for the Hutchinson Recreation Commission. And in order to serve alcohol on city property, the resolution is required. Again, there are many activities during this time period, and it is in conjunction with those, and the rec has asked for that particular resolution for that purpose. Any questions from the council?
If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'm sorry. I move to approve the resolution authorizing a portion of June's 3rd Thursday event on June 15th, 2023, as a special event pursuant to City Code Section 18-801, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I second that.
Any discussion? If not, please call roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Conklin?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 8A, Consider Contract with Hutchinson Community College for Replacement of Telescopic Bleachers at the Sports Arena.
Good morning. Justin Combs again. So this item is for a cost-share agreement with the community college for the replacement of the blue seats or the telescoping bleachers. I'll go over a little bit about the agreement itself, and then we'll dive into the bleachers and why they need to be replaced. The agreement is a 50/50 cost-share with a maximum of $1.2 million. We do estimate the seats to be about a million-dollar project. That's what we budgeted for. Also in the agreement, basically every decision throughout the process will be made in conjunction with HCC as far as design and color and all those sorts of things. We'll also coordinate all construction with the college as well. Obviously, it could be very disruptive to their seasons, so we'll look at how we can fit the new bleacher construction. Ideally, the bleachers would be installed effectively a year from today, so we'd start late May, early June, kind of after graduation season, and get those installed, ready to go for softball, or for volleyball season in August. The reason that we have such a long timeframe is basically looking at a year. These are going to be a fairly long lead time for production, so we'll get moving on design right away, but then they'll have to be custom-made to fit the arena, so we're expecting a fairly long lead time. We are confident that that year's schedule is achievable. So again, the agreement's a 50/50 split. City would bear the entire cost upfront, and then it'd be a repayment over 10 years for that 50%. Funding for this project actually comes from the sales tax. When we did the initial sales tax agreement, we did collect a little bit over the $29 million renovation cost to cover future repairs and future items such as this. So with that, I will jump a little bit into why the bleachers need to be replaced. So bleachers were installed in 1981, makes them 42 years old. We've done, or we, as at the college, really have done a great job of maintaining the bleachers. There's 1,660, I think, so there's 1,660 seats total on both sides of these blue retractable telescoping bleachers. Again, they're 42 years old. When we were doing the renovation, we had a seating manufacturer making some changes to them, and he was astonished they were still around. His knowledge, this is the only set of this type of bleachers still in function. They have about a 25-year life expectancy on this particular set, so we're well past kind of what we would expect out of these bleachers. The bleachers we're looking at to replace them have more in line with a 40-year life So here they are, retracted. Now we get into kind of the underside of them. The big motor that you can see kind of at the bottom left is what drives the retractable feature of these, and then there's a chain basically, or a track. Those parts are no longer available, and so a few years ago, we had to replace several of them, so we had to actually send a piece of that to a custom machine shop in, I believe it's Colorado that made them, had to custom machine those tracks or those trucks, I guess, for that. And the concern with this is that if we have some binding or an issue with that track, and they're in the middle of moving the bleachers in or out, the bleachers are effectively stuck where they're at until we can get them replaced. And so right now, every time they move them in or out, they have a staff member stand at each one of these tracks and watch them as they come in to make sure they're tracking in line and not binding. However, really, the more important piece is the locking mechanism, so it's covered right now with that cover, but it's these fine parts, little latches there that hold the seats up and the rows up as they come out. Those parts are no longer available. The manufacturer doesn't support these. We've had a couple times where the seats haven't caught all the way, so as they were being retracted out, that little black metal piece in the middle, some of those have broken off, and so it didn't catch and didn't lock the seat in place. Luckily, HCC staff noticed it before anybody sat in it, and they were able to replace the piece, because when we did the renovation project, we had to remove a few of the seats to align the aisles. So if you remember, before the arena project, to get all the way to the yellow seats or to the red seats, you actually have to go around to the corners. You couldn't just walk up the aisles. So when we did that adjustment, we did steal some parts from the ones we took out, so that's what we're using now for spare parts. So again, this has been a project on the books for a while, something we've been working with the college. It is my recommendation to proceed with this agreement, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
No questions?
I move to approve an agreement with Hutch Community College for Replacement of the Telescopic Bleachers at the Hutchinson Sports Arena and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Any discussion on this? If not, please call roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Conklin?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 8B, Consider Agreement with Schaefer Architecture for the Design and Development of Construction Documents for the Bleacher Replacement Project at the Hutchinson Sports Arena.
So this project is basically the design of getting those bleachers replaced. We've chosen Schaefer, formerly Schaefer Johnson Cox Frye, now they're just called Schaefer. They did the, they were the lead architect on the arena project when we renovated it, so it just makes sense. They know the building. They are the ones that designed the layout as it sits today. It is a 3% of total cost, which is really a lot less than I was expecting typically for design agreements. I look for a 10%. This one, there's not as much design, so I was thinking it would be in that 5% to 6%. So 3% of total cost seems like a really, really good deal. I've had a ton of luck with Schaefer. They work almost exclusively with the college as well, so it would be my recommendation to proceed with Schaefer.
Nothing against Schaefer or any of my architect friends. Why do we need an architect for the bleacher design if we already have a bleacher design in place?
So the new system will function differently, so making sure all the electrical components are there, making sure all the aisles and everything align, helping put together all the bid documents, those sorts of things.
And that's not done by the bleacher manufacturer?
They will do shop drawings of what the actual bleachers look like when they're done, but we'll need to come up with kind of a set of drawings that we can bid out.
For the install?
Yeah. And I think that's why we're at 3% and not 10%, because the bulk of the actual drawing and design is going to be done at shop drawings by the manufacturer. But I think to have a fair process, you know, we need to have some sort of document, some sort of specs, some sort of drawings that we can bid out, so everybody's bidding on essentially the same thing.
And I'm not trying to call you to the table. I just don't understand it, because if we're getting shop drawings for the bleachers themselves, that should be enough for someone to bid on the install. I mean, I'm sure there's electrical aspects to it.
But to provide the vendors who are doing the shop drawings with enough information so that everybody's shop drawings are at least comparable.
Different bleacher manufacturers.
Yeah, because this will be bid out publicly, so we could be looking at, right now, we're looking at two that we know of that can make this system. There may be more out there, so that we have some sort of standard that we send out, so everybody's looking at the same basic spec, same basic layout. When it comes to the finite detail of designing them, that's going to be on the shop drawings on the manufacturer. And again, I think that's why we're at 3% and not at, you know, 10% like we would typically see. But I understand your question, and it makes a lot of sense, so.
I don't know, I'm kind of leaning with you, John, on this a little bit. I mean, they're going to have to come in and look at what they're bidding on and say, can they even do this job? I mean, it would seem to me that should be part of the job, but I don't.
And we'll do a pre-bid, so we'll have them all come and look at what we have now. But again, it's developing that standard document that we can set out, send out, that they're all bidding on the same thing. That way, there's no surprises when we open bids or when we look at shop drawings and like, oh, we didn't know you wanted fully automated, or whatever the issue is, so it's really to create some consistency when we do open those bids.
It's $30,000. I'm not making light of $30,000, but that's what he's talking about.
Correct.
Yeah, I get it.
Any other questions or comments on this? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Schaefer Architecture for Design Services for the Placement of the Telescopic Bleachers at the Hutchinson Sports Arena and authorize the mayor to sign. I'll reluctantly second this.
Any other discussion? If not, please call roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Conklin?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 8C, Consider Special Alcohol Fend Awards for 2024.
Paul Brown, City Attorney. Although we do this each year, I'll give you a little background on this, because some of the members of the governing body haven't seen this before. Each time there is a, basically a mixed drink sold in the city of Hutchinson, there is a tax upon that drink, and that's where the local alcoholic liquor fund comes from. And the city receives, those cities that are over 6,000 population, receives 70% of that amount. One-third goes to the general fund, one-third goes to parks, and then one-third goes to the special alcoholic liquor fund, and it has a specific purpose. And you see kind of a lengthy first paragraph of that cover memo. That's the principal purpose. It's for alcoholism and drug abuse prevention and education, detoxification intervention, or treatment of persons in danger of becoming alcoholics or drug abusers. And you see the proposed distributions for this year. They are the same as the past several years with Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Boys and Girls Clubs, Rise Up Reno and Reno County Drug Court. We try to do both, prevention with younger folks and also with the drug court to deal with those who already have addiction problems. It's not a huge fund, not huge amounts of money, but it does, you know, when I look at the programs, and this is just me personally, with Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and Boys and Girls Clubs, you have role models, and you also have supervised activities by responsible individuals with the youth, and that's good for them. When they get too much time on their hands and get with the wrong crowd, drugs enter the picture. And so it's a good use and the intended use of these funds, and we also do other grants from this, and we have for the past couple of years, to the Detox Center, helping with the construction of it originally and try to contribute towards their capital expenditures. Some of the program costs of these folks, we can't scratch the surface of their costs with this amount of limited funds, but when they have capital needs come up, we try to address those as well, and I expect that we'll be coming back to the council with some of that also. But these contributions have been each year, and would ask the council to approve the recommendations.
Any questions for Mr. Brown? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve staff's recommendation on agency awards from the special alcohol funds fiscal year 2024.
A second.
Any discussion? If not, please call roll.
Garza?
Yes.
Conklin?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes. Next item.
Item 9, Report of City Officials.
All right, let's bounce around a little bit today. Mr. Fast, would you start us off?
I would be glad to. I have a laundry list of a few things, and I apologize in advance, but welcome, Ms. Clemens. Sorry I was not here to say yes, but welcome. I'd like to talk about the code in
Uh, I'd like to talk about the code enforcement on grass. It seems to be a hot topic, or it was a hot topic. Um, I would encourage the citizens of Hutchinson to use our click fix on our website, hutchgov.com. There's a little button there that says see click fix, and you can, you can report any tall grass, um, that you see that you feel is unsightly. Uh, I will make a comment that a lot of, uh, some of the chain stores have, have contracted out their, their maintenance services to the east and west coast. And many of us that are in this business will not work for them because we've been burned, or they're telling us how much they're willing to pay and it's not near enough. So might put a little bit of, uh, context into what's happening around our town. And I think when you lose local control on, you know, the store manager or whoever hiring those folks, it, it does cause a disconnect. And, and, you know, there's, there's, I know of at least four or five of us contractors that have been asked to bid several of these projects, and we just ignore them. So, um, the, in the past, the, the inspection department has, has taken a policy of it's just, uh, citizen-driven complaint responses. I feel like, I, I think they're moving a little bit away from that. I know that, that Mike is out today, but, uh, I visited with him at length about this. Um, and, you know, I've encouraged him to do a little more enforcement, you know, on the main arteries around Hutch to kind of keep our town looking, looking good. That's, that's the first thing. I, I just wanted to make sure the public knew and understood. Uh, and there's a procedure. Once you, once you complain, they give whoever you've complained about ten days to fix it. And then we have a, a contractor that goes out and mows it, and they charge an administrative fee. So the city's not, um, out a lot of money, uh, providing lawn care for folks that don't want to provide their lawn care. Um, next thing, um, uh, I've been contacted by a few people about our fireworks ordinance, our current fireworks ordinance, um, seems to be very restrictive in compared to other towns around the area recently. Wichita just, uh, went to a safe and sane fireworks ordinance that allows for higher, higher than six feet. Um, I did ask the fire chief to come in and, and visit about this. I realize that, you know, if we change that, you know, it's a little late for fireworks stands to say, hey, we'll, we'll pay your fee and set up a fireworks stand because we can sell more fireworks. I realize it's a little late this year, but it might not be too late to, um, change that so that we can at least be like Wichita or, or not maybe as restrictive as we've been in the past. I know that in 2006, we changed it to where we could have fireworks, then we reeled it back in. Now we're, I, I would, I don't know if I can get consensus from the, um, from you guys, my fellow council folks. But anyway, I, do you want to speak, Chief Beer, to this a little bit? I don't want to do anything that, you know, you're, you're a department head for a reason, and we need to hear from you.
Uh, Stephen Beer, Fire Chief Hutchinson. Uh, we, my staff and I, it was just a matter of time when we figured this was coming down after Wichita just did it. They signed off on May 23rd. I actually have their ordinance here with me today, and I did review it, uh, prior to our discussion on this. And, you know, this is, uh, since I've been in town since 2017, this is an unenforceable rule and regulation that's on the books. Uh, myself, if you want to do a ride along with me, Fourth of July, any one of you are more than welcome to, to see what goes on, what we, what we're up against. My staff and I are on the streets along with, uh, city police department, trying to enforce this rule and regulation. And it's unforceable. It's, there's no way that we can do, we, we get bottle rockets and, uh, uh, arterial shells shot at us, over us, uh, you name it, it happens. And so, you know, my staff and I, we're not totally against. I think the bigger part of the question is, is I hope that between the city of Hutchinson and the county, uh, Reno County, is we can get together and get one ordinance for the entire county and all the cities and municipalities. Because what's happening now is we can go to South Hutch, uh, and other places in the county, and we can buy any bomb or shell, whatever you want, and they bring it in the Hutch, which is safe and sane, and they shoot them off here. So, uh, I, I think the bigger part of the, the goal would be to try to work with the county commissioners and, and coming up with a resolution comparable. Wichita's is really nicely written, um, where they allow these arterials for the five days, I believe it is. Um, and then after that, they have to have a permit for the, uh, from the fire marshal's office. But I think the ultimate goal would be to work together and come up with a, that way it could be enforced countywide. Everybody's on the same rules and regulations then. And I think if you set, if we go to something like this where they're allowed to shoot off these larger arterials, if you say eleven o'clock is the hour that it stops every night, and typically they start at ten in the morning till eleven o'clock at night for the five days roughly, but if it's eleven o'clock, I think we have a better chance of enforcing that then. If we see something go off, then we can probably get over there compared to the hundreds of arterial shells that are being shot off right now. Uh, like I said, it's just an unenforceable rule. We try our best and, uh, but there's nothing that we're going to do to, uh, change this. And I understand the history of it. If, uh, the people don't know the history of it, uh, the city of Hutchinson lost a house, almost lost a couple elderly people on the north end of town, uh, back in the day, and that's why this was put into place. We're still going to have fires. We still have fires every year. And typically what happens, our fires, our people put the fireworks, spent fireworks in their garbage container. They put their garbage container along their garage or their house, two o'clock in the morning, their garbage can starts on fire, starts the side of the house on fire, and we got a house fire. That's what we see. That stuff is not going to go away, no matter what type of ordinance that you have in place or don't have in place. But I think from the fire department's perspective, I think a joint venture, if we could work with the county commissioners and try to do something, uh, countywide, would be the ultimate goal. But if you want something in the city, um, yeah, I think it's going to be about fifty percent of the people want this. Fifty percent probably don't want it because we hear the people that have their dogs and other issues that pop up that don't allow, like the loud noises. But truly what happens when we go out on patrol, uh, during them five days here, when we get the complaints, dispatch is literally flooded with, with these calls. I see everybody shaking their head here. Um, they, they'll shoot them off in the street, the neighbor will call them in, and, uh, we'll go and typically the street lighting's not the best. They walk back in the back behind the house, and, uh, all of a sudden, we slow up and we're trying to figure out where this is. We can see where it was and stuff like that. We'll get out, check things around, nobody answers. And as soon as we go away, they lob one over our heads. And so, uh, that's what we deal with day in and day out, uh, during this five-day period. I, I don't sleep at all during the five days of fireworks, no matter what type of ordinance you have in place. Uh, that's just the nature of what we do.
And neither do my dogs.
So.
They don't sleep either for five days, but.
But we're, I can tell you on behalf of my staff and myself, we're not against it.
Okay. So can we, as a council, temporarily change our local code and then possibly at our next, uh, city-county chat, just say, county, give us a, give us a code we can live with, and we'll just adopt that as our.
No, I'm, I'm open for discussion on this. I'm all, I think it's important that we have the county get involved with this. I don't know if we're ready to today make a decision on our local code.
Right. Well, and I, I'm just trying to make it easier for this July 4th. I don't, uh, you know, I, you're going to be doing the same thing, whether we go six foot maybe or twelve foot, but I think the risk is pretty low right now with the rain we've had, and hopefully that, that's helpful. I don't.
And we do have one more meeting that we could potentially.
And, and that's what I was getting at by having this conversation now.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, I don't know how busy.
And it's already been done for us because Wichita, we can just copy and paste.
I could modify it to our ordinance and get it to, uh, Paul Brown for you if you set your wishes.
Yeah, you're not going to have a temporary fix.
Uh, that's not what I'm asking for.
Okay. Well, you said temporary, then it's an ordinance. It's the law, and it can only be changed by another ordinance. Now, Chief Beer has already told me, he'll provide a draft for me. We can have that ready for the next meeting.
But I think it needs to have county weigh in on it, too.
The county had, in, in, in the past, when we went to Safe and Sane, the county followed right behind us with Safe and Sane. Uh, so I think, quite frankly, because Chief Beer provides fire protection for both the city and Fire District Two, that they will follow along with that. Now, the other remaining cities in the county, you know, they can do whatever they want, but, but normally, and there's already expressed some opinion from the county commission, one of the commissioners, about changing the fireworks, uh, regulations. So, um, it can be done.
There is some merit. It would definitely help us going into this Fourth of July as far as enforcing that, uh, if we got it done before then. There, right now, typically last year, I looked it up, we had, I think it was six vendors, Angela. Um, this year we're down to four, um, that are selling fireworks in the cities. I think you're going to see if this opens up. I think you're going to see that probably quadruple, um, as far as the sales of fireworks. But that money, that permit money goes towards the fireworks that, for the city, too. So, uh, that's some revenue, too, for the city.
I'm on board with Chief Beer writing up an ordinance that works.
I'm in favor. I'm just, whatever legal, uh.
Yeah.
Process.
We don't want to put too much on your plate, Paul, but, uh.
Well, you know, Chief Beer is going to do most of the work. It's, it's, it's kind of plug and play in the ordinance in that section, anyway.
Well, I, I appreciate you guys listening, and I think we can.
I also agree. Let's change the ordinance.
Good.
I, I have a question. Over the past, and you might want to weigh in, over the past couple of years, have there been tickets written? I know you say it's unenforceable, but I would imagine that there are some people who are blatant or belligerent about.
We deal with the, with alcohol involved in, in the situation more in the evening. We go in as an educational thing. That's our goal all the way around with, even when we do fire inspections and stuff like that. We want to educate our citizens. We're not there to enforce tickets and stuff like that. While we go in, we'll, we'll talk to the individuals and say, hey, this is what the city ordinance is. Um, these are the rules and regulations right now, and if we got to come back, you know, then we'll have to talk about a ticket. But unless they're really, uh, out of control, and a lot of times, not to say a lot, but there's a handful of times every year, we have to bring the police department in, uh, where somebody's belligerent and stuff like that. But typically alcohol's involved, and usually somebody will grab that individual, pull them off to the side at their party and stuff, and have somebody with common sense walk in and, uh, help us ease the tension and ease the situation.
Um, my next question is, um, on the wording of the ordinance, I would be curious, um, how it's written, if it's written as like a floating five-day period surrounding the Fourth of July, because, um, within the next couple of years, the five days around the Fourth of July is just going to be Monday through Friday, and you're going to have people on the weekends who are then, you know, trying to shoot it off.
I think Wichita here is twenty-seventh of June through July 4th.
Okay.
So that's a full week period, I would.
Full week, okay.
So.
So you're always going to have a weekend in, in it, essentially?
Correct.
So let me get this straight. We're going to follow Wichita's, but you're going to change stuff in the ordinance, right?
Well, yeah, I make sure we have, uh, under, Wichita uses the same fire codes, IBC that, uh, uh, 2018 edition, um, that we do. So I'll just, we'll double check with, uh, existing language that we have right now. And, uh, I'll put something together in a draft form and get it to Paul for you to review.
Okay. And then we'll vote on the change in the ordinance next, next council meeting. Okay.
I'm assuming you would want the same hours from ten in the morning till eleven o'clock at night?
Yeah.
I think that works, and if the community thinks otherwise, they have two weeks to tell us.
Yeah, contact Stacy Goss.
[laughing]
No, I appreciate, I appreciate my fellow council members. I think it's a worthy conversation. Thanks for, for your information.
And if anybody wants to do a ride along, I'll be working all day on the force, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anyway, I, I do have one more item to bring up. Um, there's been a couple businesses contact, uh, me about our panhandling situation. Um, specifically at Thirteenth and Main, we've, we've put parking benches twenty-five feet from the front door of Dylan's, and there's somebody that is sitting there and getting somewhat aggressive with the patrons of that business. And this is a ongoing conversation that, that we've had surrounding mental health, unhoused, and drug use. Um, don't know if the council, I, I don't know. I mean, Kroger contacted me, Dylan's district manager cared enough to come to our, our unhoused meeting the other day to speak about it. And then there was another incident at, at DCI Park the other day where somebody was setting up a campsite. Somebody came out and said, you can't do this. And he threw a cooler at him and got charged with assault. Um, just beginning the conversation about can we address this? And how do we address it constitutionally? How do we legally address this and fix it? I, we don't have to decide today, but eventually maybe we need to talk about it. We talk about it every month, right back here in this room. And I think we're making a lot of headway. I think, I, I think we're making some headway with the, the day shelter that we've helped fund. I think that it's moved some people away from, from our downtown area. But, but the bottom line is, we don't want it to hurt businesses that pay taxes, give charitably to United Way, other things. So I'm, again, I, I don't want to belabor this meeting, but I, I think we need to be thinking about it and talking about what we can do.
Do we have a panhandling ordinance now? Or not?
No, we don't. Um, there are some cities that have, uh, panhandling ordinances. And the reason this isn't, the reason this doesn't happen typically is because the public sidewalk is so close to the front door at Thirteenth and Main Dylan's. That's why it's happening there. It doesn't really, it's not really a problem in other businesses, the mall, it's all private property. Um, so there's a, a distinction there. Um, anyway, something, something to consider. And, and again, in, in the pastor's prayer, he's like, what do we need to learn? Maybe we need to learn something. We don't necessarily need to react and fix it. What can we learn to help the situation?
Well, I, I, I make this comment, and, and I, I can handle being aggressively panhandled, and I have.
Right.
Uh, not here in this town, but in other places. And, uh, but a lot of people would be fearful under, uh, some of these aggressive panhandling, uh, uh, tactics.
Well, and then.
And it doesn't, I, I can handle mine, but, but there are lots of people that would not be comfortable with this. And I, I think that that needs to be addressed. And, and as we've seen, it, it's, it's expanding. But once it starts and, and, and it's allowed, it expands. It doesn't, uh, and so I'm, I, I would agree that, uh, it's, it's something that we should, uh, uh, come up with, uh, uh, an ordinance or, or whatever the, uh, for, for the sake of, of just regular citizens that are out trying to just.
Well, and it's an elderly population, and that was the, the lady that contacted me. It was actually from Kroger's, um, uh, community liaison person from Kroger. I mean, it had gone all the way up, you know, beyond Dylan's. And, and there's a, there's an elderly population that shops at that store.
Absolutely.
You know, they're feeling, anyway. And, and for the record, I don't know that this will fix it, but it might give, you know, the police department an extra tool, too.
Yeah.
Anyway.
I, so homework. Look to see what kind of panhandling ordinances are out there in different communities, because I'm sure it's online, and see if, if there's something that's reasonable for us to look at adopting. And maybe it's simply something in regards to not within a certain distance of a business entrance or something like that. Um, but it'd be worthwhile seeing what other communities do.
I think that not within a certain distance would be the most, the one that I have the most appetite for, because when you do that, you essentially eliminate a whole swath of an area, because there's so many businesses downtown, for instance. And I think those might be the most effective, um.
I can tell you, the man to my right is probably going to push back, because, again, aren't there some constitutional, constitutionality issues?
Well, and that's the problem. Uh, the decisions of the appellate courts have not been helpful at all. Um, and I don't disagree with, with anything that you're saying. I, we understand the problem. Um, but in terms of panhandling and the anti-camping type or. But in terms of panhandling and the anti-camping type ordinances, and you'll see it, if you just, just Google either one of ordinances in Kansas regarding either one of those subjects, panhandling or camping, it'd, it'd quickly, actually, I was looking at it and it brought me up on another subject. But, no. It was city business, okay? But it, it comes up with the, the constitutional objections and the threats by the ACLU and.
But there are cities that have camping and, and personal belongings ordinances. I haven't specifically done the panhandling look up. We, I'll, I'll do that.
I can gather some of that.
Okay. Do you want me to mention the next thing?
Sure.
One more thing. Lights on sync on Main Street. I understand why they're not synchronized, and I, I'm okay with that, but after midnight or eleven o'clock PM, can we put those back on sync so that the police can respond more appropriately to calls? So when people are out late at night, they're not stopping at every light.
Talking about sync, you talking about synchronizing?
Synchronizing them, yeah.
You're not talking about the red flash that we used to have, right? You're talking about synchronizing?
Well, I think they go to, yeah, they go to.
Two greens, two.
Well, actually, we could put them either on synchronize or yellow flash all up and down Main Street. That's how they used to be. I know we went away from that, and this might be a liability and a warrant issue, but it just seems silly to me that we can't do that.
That's, Mr. Clinton, you have any answer to that one, sir?
And that's my last. This is my last.
You're fine.
Cut off.
I'm Brian Clinton, Director of Public Works. So I wasn't prepared to talk about the traffic signals downtown. I know that is a project to resynchronize those at some point. I am not a hundred percent sure on what that schedule is to complete that project. As far as going back to the flashing, we did eliminate that because of a liability concern and not having traffic signals perform the way they're expected to perform.
Okay.
If you would like me to try to figure out an update on the schedule to resynchronize those downtown traffic signals, I can do some research on that and, and see where we're at on that project.
You know, I, I suppose hopefully the, the downtown businesses will weigh in on that, because I think the thought is, when you slow traffic down and make them stop, they look over and they say, oh, the, you know, hickory stick, I should stop there and eat. Don't know if, you know, I just, again, just something maybe we ought to think about.
And a number of years ago, we did do a synchronization project.
Right, yeah, you could sail right through there at twenty-two miles an hour.
Yeah, exactly.
Speed limit's twenty.
Excuse me, it was twenty.
Just so you know.
Thank you.
Real quick, I don't want to put you on the spot, Mr. Clinton, but years, we had it on the tower. We don't have the antenna on the tower no more. We're not synchronizing it by radios anymore, correct?
That is correct. We're not.
So now we're going to a preemption system with the radios. Is that right?
Well, there is a preemption project, and I'm not exactly sure what the status of that project is just right now.
Okay. Well, the preemption, we'll put them back in sync if we have.
That was the, I know that was the goal of the project, was to kind of kill two birds with one stone, the preemption as well as the synchronization project at one time. Yes.
And that's gonna be done this year, correct? The preemption?
And again, I'm not a hundred percent sure on what the schedule of that is. Yeah. I haven't been involved in that project, but I can do some research.
And I hate to put you on the spot, but, okay.
Yes.
It just seems simple to go back like they were three or four years ago.
Well, you don't have the equipment to do it now.
What happened to it?
I don't know. I haven't been there since eighteen.
All right.
The equipment now, you have to have some radio, you have to have synchronous cable. We have the cable there, but I think they're going to new update the traffic lights with the preemption system. That's good.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, counsel, for indulging me and mayor.
No problem.
Appreciate it.
You're good. Mr. Garza, would you like to go next?
Yes, I'm glad not being first. I appreciate that. First of all, June nineteenth, fifteenth to the nineteenth on, on Juneteenth, let's get out there and help them and support them. We need everybody's support. We're all Hutchonians, so we all need to support each other. Also, Smallville, we need to go out there. We're gonna have a lot of stuff this next weekend. Let's split the community and everybody go to everything. So I'll go one place, go another. That's great. I think that's great. Founders, the founders in my area, we're having a meeting tonight at five-thirty. We're gonna have a big celebration. We're planning it. I need everybody in the southeast district to come to that meeting at the Zoom, the Zone. I keep calling it Zoom. The Zone at eight oh five East B. We need everybody there. I don't care if you're from the founders or not. We need to get there. So it's going great. The founders are going great. We're getting people involved, and that's the southeast district. We need to get everybody there to help get this thing going. On May twenty-seventh, I had one of my big meetings. I'm starting to have more and more people at my meetings, which makes me have to be prepared for it, but that's okay. I can handle that. So I had a lot of people there, had a lot of good questions, and we got, I got a lot of things answered. So as long as we keep doing that, we'll let the people know what's going on. My meetings is informed in public, and it, it does, I do really well. So, and Miss, our city manager was there, I'm grateful for her being there, and she answered questions, and it was all great. The school board, we had the school board questionnaire. There are some people from the school, from Lincoln School, they're asking questions, and not real happy what's going on, but we have to, that's what's going on right now. I don't know exactly what's going on there. Mr. Fast, you got anything to say about that?
Well, I've met with Dr. Johnson. I, I have a feeling the decision's already been made, but I will be at the next school board meeting, and I know.
I'll be.
You'll be here.
But.
And I apologize for not trying to get involved and help. That's not really any of our business, but it does, when you start taking away neighborhood schools, you start down a decline of a neighborhood.
Yep.
It does not help, so I, I don't know.
All we can do at this point is go to the meetings and try to get as educated as we can on that, that system, what's gonna happen down there at Lincoln. I don't like it. A lot of people don't like it, but we have to get informed, see what's going on, and be involved in the decisions that they got left to do. There's bussings and all kinds of decisions still have to be made in the next couple of months. So I, I invite the public to go down there and ask questions and see what's going on. The only way you're gonna get anything done is get people there to ask questions. That's how things get done. One, another thing I want to say, I'm gonna be your next southeast district council member for the next four years. I think that's great. I don't, still not gonna get no sleep, but that's okay. I put myself there and I want to serve the public, so we're gonna keep going and we're gonna work together and make Hutch better, okay? Youth council, please. We need people at the youth council. Next week on the twentieth, twentieth, six o'clock right here, our youth council meet. They're doing a great job. We need to support them. It's hard for me to explain to five youth council from seventh to twelfth grade while there's nobody in the audience. The youth for years has told me there's nothing to do. Youth, I'm speaking to you. You have a council. Go to them. Tell them what you want done in Hutchinson, Kansas. Tell them what kind of things you want. You got a choice. You have a choice. Get to the youth council. Six o'clock next week, right here. It's gonna be elections coming up for the youth councils, probably starting in August, so be part of the youth council. Youngsters from seventh grade to twelfth grade, you can become a, you can become a youth counselor, all right? Deal with some of the problems we deal with. Learn how, what we go through. So I don't know if that's good or bad, but, but anyway, please be there. Please, youth, come out and support your youth council, okay? Youth council. But other than that, Mary Grace, is what I've seen so far. You're doing a great job, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, all the headaches you turned into. I hope you don't, that's great. I appreciate you here.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. That's all I have.
All right. Ms. Goss?
I typed mine out, so I won't ramble. My family and I attended the Salt City Fest over the weekend, and it was raining, but it was a great event. We went Friday and Saturday, and I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who was involved in putting on the event, the staff, the volunteers, as well as the law enforcement, who was all present. It felt a little bit like Hutch Fest back in the nineties. Between Smallville and the Juneteenth celebrations, there are a lot of events over the next couple of weeks to educate and entertain. I hope that the community shows up for these events. There's been a lot of work put into all of them. One of my personal favorite events is the Sunflower Dog Show at the State Fair. Very not well-known, but it's a really cool event, and if you have some free time this weekend is at the State Fairgrounds, it's literally a dog show, and it's just really entertaining and fun. And the State Fairgrounds stays super busy. We're lucky to have it. The, I want to thank the Salt City Splash staff for their patience and professionalism over the past week or two, the city maintenance crew for their hard work, and the community for their patience. Justin did say that the pool is opening today, so hopefully we are full steam ahead. The Young Professionals of Reno County is holding their June mingle on Thursday at five-thirty with the Hutch Clinic, and this is held at the Hutch Clinic Ambulatory Surgery Center. You can find information about that on Facebook. And lastly, I wanted to welcome Mary Grace Clements. I appreciate you coming in and getting straight to work. I know you've already been working hard and look forward to working alongside you.
Thank you.
And that's it.
All right. Mr. Conklin?
Yes, I have a couple. First, I want to congratulate and commend the Reno County Commission for their work to reduce some of the bureaucracy and red tape involved in, in, in septic tank systems and, and some of the overreach that, that they have found that is inhibits, inhibits companies from being able to expand and, and improve their operations. And, and I would encourage our, our, our city staff and our, our next city manager to take that sort of a, an approach, that sort of a proactive direction. We, we have a reputation. I'm not saying it's completely earned or deserved, but we have a reputation of being hard to deal with, and that's out there, and I think most people know that, and, and that we need to have a more can-do, let's figure out how to get this done, yes, I can, let's, we'll work it through and, and make it happen attitude. And the county has started right down a good path there, and we need to follow their lead. My other thing is, certainly we welcome Mary Grace, but, but our, our real issue here is, is that is our next city manager. And this is a critical hire. It's always a critical hire, but we've had two fails, and things are clearly, as, as we all are aware, we've got a lot of open positions in the, in the, in the community that need to be filled with long-term people and long-term solutions. We need to find the right leader, manager, and we need, it's, 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 it's critical. And so really, the biggest thing the city is facing right this minute is that, finding the right leader, manager to move us forward. And, and that, that's not just, not just a manager. Certainly, they gotta be a good manager, but they've gotta be a good leader, and they've got to be able to bring all these departments together and, and work together and create a can-do atmosphere that, that we need in Hutchinson and Reno County. And we've got a lot of, a lot of, we've got a lot of projects going on right now, you know, that are critical, and there is a lot of work being done right now, you know, with, with the childcare deal and the housing projects, the rehabilitation and, and trying to expand housing and, and the downtown development. And, and not to mention the airport, which we're gonna spend tonight talking about the airport and, and the importance of it and what needs to be done moving forward there. The water rights doesn't even get any attention, and that may be the most important thing that we have in front of us that, that is urgent. And so we've got a lot on our plate here, and, but it all is gonna center around the hire of the city manager, hiring the right person, and that can, that can manage the city and lead us in the right direction here, so that we can turn this tide of this slow, steady drip of population decline and, and job decline. And, and this, this is gonna be a critical part of everything going forward. So that's, that's what I have.
Well, thank you. That was a lot. But there was a lot, there was a lot to say.
Well, I don't usually say much.
No, that was good. I like it. Well, and, and I agree with you. I mean, we can't wait for, we, we want to hire the right person for city manager. We can't wait for that moment to move things forward. We have to move things forward with, with guidance from Mary Grace Clements, too. Couple of items. One, the airport meeting is tonight here at five-thirty. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Just want to make sure that's out there. The first city council meeting in July will actually be Wednesday, the fifth, not on a Tuesday, because most of us will be maybe shooting off fireworks in a different fashion than we were last year. I, something to note, and I'm, maybe I'll get a free beer from Steve Peterman for saying this, but Monday morning, I was driving down Main Street, and Steve Peterman, at seven-thirty in the morning with a broom, was at the intersection of Fifth and Main sweeping up sand in the corner. And if, if we have more people in our community take personal responsibility like that for events, or things that they're involved in, that goes a long way. I just want to mention that. And then probably the most important item was I was part of a fundraiser for Salvation Army on Friday, along with council member Greg Fast. How many doughnuts did you eat, Mr. Fast?
I had two.
He had two doughnuts in five minutes, which is a pathetic showing on behalf of city council. I managed a meager second place with nine and three-quarters doughnuts. So at least one of us showed up to the Salvation Army.
I appreciate you publicly pointing that out again. I've already pointed it out publicly.
I just want to make sure it's in the meeting minutes for next meeting before I approve them.
I want my money back, and you can give it to him. I donated to you.
I won't get into who donated to his pot publicly, but.
That, that being said, welcome to our new interim city manager, Mary Grace Clements, and I will hand it over to you.
Thank you to the city council. Thank you for the opportunity and to the community. I, I want to say it's officially been a week. It's been a very hit, hit the ground running week. We have some focus. I will say that as I see my job, my job is continuing, I'm continued to be impressed by the city workers, their hard work and their dedication. They are working very hard with the intent to make this better. Their hearts and their minds are in the right place. What I see as a goal is to help them be more successful in the roles that they've been given. I look forward to meeting some of the directors I haven't had the opportunity yet to spend some time with. We have a heavy task. I, I agree with your, your statements. This is a critical time, I find, with the city, and I find comfort in the fact that we, we have the right mindset to continue to move the city forward. I think we're, we're seeing some, some synergies of work. We just have to just be better and do hire the right people to get into the positions where we can be successful to keep the city moving forward. My focus, obviously, we have budget meetings. That's going to be a major focus. And the other thing that I'm taking upon to start to look at is, are there to, to start to identify some potential single points of failure that we need to look at as we go forward with different departments, in the sense of, we have great people who are working, but are they getting ready to retire? What is our plan? Do we have some, some succession planning? And so that we're constantly looking at what we have for openings, but where do we have in the future with another year or so, where are we gonna be, and are we looking forward to that? So a lot of the focus is going to be on what we're doing, hiring the right people, and making sure that we're set up for success for the future, not just for today. So it's been a week. I continue, my commitment is to work hard. I look forward to looking at the candidates to, to fill the job full-time, but I am excited. I'm, I'm honored, and I promise you I will continue to work hard every day for, for the future of the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Okay.
Any discussion? If not, call roll, please.
Garza?
Yes.
Conklin?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes, please. Yes, please.